Right, welcome everybody. Good evening. We'll call the Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting of May 1st, 2023 to order. If the clerk will help me with the roll call, please.
Burrington?
Here.
Flurry?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Mohal?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Ten present?
Okay, if you'll stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we pray to thank you for our many blessings, our country, our community, and our freedoms. We thank you for our police and fire first responders, all EMS responders throughout our country, and we pray for their safety and well-being. We pray to thank you for all our current military service members, for the men and women, and for the men and women veterans who have served throughout our country's history. We thank you for their sacrifice and service. Tonight, as we welcome and seat a newly-elected city council, we pray to thank you for those who have served the city of Belvidere in the past and for their dedication of time and commitment, and we thank you for those who will serve our community in the future. We ask that you bless all those who serve and remind us by your word the importance of their responsibilities. We ask tonight that you give each of us compassion, courage, patience, and wisdom as we conduct our city's business here this evening. We pray for these things. In Christ's name, amen. Please be seated. All right, as we go to public comment, I first wanted to point out that, as requested, Chief Woody had put the 2022 Annual Report in the packet. All the aldermen, I think, have a hard copy, so they are there. Thank you, Chief. And I also want to, I know we have a lot of EMS individuals here, paramedics, we have our Belvidere Fire Department, and many others here associated with them, and I wanted to thank you for being here, first of all. Thank you very much. And it is a new, today marks a new era in the city of Belvidere. I think it's been 20 years, thereabouts, that, more than 20 years, that Lifeline had provided paramedic service to the city of Belvidere residents. And I guess you could say all good things come to an end. They certainly found that they wouldn't be able to provide that service as they had been in the past. We were fortunate, and we moved to this new chapter. And I appreciate all the hard work that's been put into this by the city attorney, Sarah Shannon, Chief Shadle as well, and all, and some of your staff as well. So I don't want to try and forget anybody here, but I'm sure I will. So anyhow, I wanted to turn it over to Chief Shadle. I know he wanted to recognize some individuals, so Chief, I'll turn this over to you. If you'd come up here, please. Thank you. Chief? We have a technical difficulty here. Bear with us.
Thank you, Your Honor. You're right, this is a awesome day. It was either 1993, I believe, or 1997 that the city of Belvidere stopped providing emergency response transport service. So it's been a long time. We had to crunch a lot of numbers to get here, do a lot of research, but today, on May 1st, city of Belvidere has been providing ambulance service. We've already had multiple calls, strings of calls, we've already received aid from ambulances, being out of ambulances, and we've also already provided aid to another community with our ambulances. They've already made transports today. We have learned that there is a little more tweaking we have to do with our reporting. We have learned there's a little tweaking we have to do with our communications, but we're here and we're providing great service to the citizens. These individuals were hired by Metro on our behalf and assigned to our department, so they didn't get an official swearing-in. So I wanted to at least recognize these 12 individuals that are going to be providing emergency medical services and care to the citizens of Belvidere. So I won't take along because I know we have a lot, but EMTs are lifesavers, absolutely, 100%. They have dedicated their lives to serve others. They don't care where you are, they don't care what the temperature is outside, they don't care if you're in a car or in a basement, or if your house is clean or dirty. Most houses are not clean, just if you're feeling self-conscious about your house. We know this because they don't have time to pick up when they call 911. And they will meet you where you are, and they will do everything in their power to help you and save your life oftentimes. So our, the SMOs that all of our fire department paramedics and all these EMTs and paramedics operate under, it's actually 290 pages. 290 pages of special instructions that they are held to, to maintain their license and by law and scope of practice and standard of care to do these things. There are 88 particular SMOs for things that they might encounter that they have to do these steps in this order. Some of them abdominal trauma, airway management, amputated parts, anaphylaxis, asthma, blast injuries, burns, cardiac arrest, childbirth, inhibition, diabetic emergencies, IO access, it's a bone drill. So needle decompression of the chest, seizure, sepsis, shock, STEMI stroke, surgical crike, that's when you can't obtain an airway with an ET tube or any other way than a surgical crike. So that and about 70 other particular SMOs and 30 different medications that these individuals will give individuals based on their needs. 30 medications that they all know the indications, when to use them, contraindications, when you shouldn't use them, routes and dosages. And they know all that, and a lot of these are weight-based. So it's truly amazing, these individuals, what they're, what they know, what they've dedicated their lives to serve others. So in our process working with Metro, we had 74 applications in 10 days. So we had a lot of options of who to choose. And I can tell you, every single one of these individuals up here, they're, they're, number one, really good at what they do, of course. Number two, they're empathetic and they care about others. And number three, they're good people to work with, because honestly, 90% of the time, we're in the station together. So those are all very important things. And so with that, I'd like to start introducing them. If you, as I introduce you, if you just walk up, you don't have to say anything unless you want, but nobody will, because most paramedics, like police and firefighters, we like to hang out in the background and not be noticed. But very first, I'd like to introduce Mike Morande. Mike Morande, Mike Morande is our contract manager for Metro, so he oversees the operations. Mike has been working with us for the past month to get everything set up, so it's been wonderful. But he's been providing EMT care for over 17 years. He comes from a place where he was a manager of 85 employees and had, oversaw four supervisors, so we're really lucky to have him. Thank you, Mike. All right. John, come on up. Good thing I know you guys, because the orders are different than my sheet. So John Dolez, he's been working for over seven years. For the past two years, he's been a supervisor. He's one of our shift leaders. We have three shifts, A, B, and C, and he's one of them, so welcome, John. Thank you very much. Rasmus Gosh.
Gotcha. No, I apologize, I should have. Rasmus, so you're from Denmark?
I'm from Denmark.
Okay. And he's been an EMTB for the past two years, and he was well-known by others to be really good, so welcome, Rasmus. Thank you. All right. Alex Stallions. So Alex used to work on my shift, and so I got to see firsthand that she's really good at what she does. She also has 10 years, 10 years of experience, so welcome, Alex. All right, Hannah. Hannah DeLu, did I get that right?
You did.
Okay, good. Hannah, I know you've been doing this for a long time. She also has experience on the fire department, where she, so she has at Marengo, and also experience as EMT for Lifeline, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, April Slack.
Hi.
Hi, April. Now there, believe it or not, there are a couple individuals that I just met at the beginning, but came highly recommended. That's right. So you, April's been an EMT for 10 years, and she's also a dispatcher, so welcome, April.
Thank you.
All right, Lauren Schultz. Lauren, again, she's worked with North Park Fire, and she's also worked on my shift, and she's exceptional at what she does. She's a great leader and a great paramedic. All right, Aubrey Swatter. Aubrey is an EMT, how long have you been an EMT?
Two years.
Two years. Two years, so she, see here what I got about you. Well, I can tell you for sure, she was highly recommended.
Lifeline.
And you're good at what you do, and you're a good person, you're good to work with. Two years, and you're skilled, you're skilled in risk management and problem solving, which is, which is very important on the field. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Quinn Staley. Quinn, he has experience with Cherry Valley and Lifeline, and he's been, he's, all of our paramedics are lead medics, they're the company officer of the rig there. And let me, I just want to make sure I don't forget anything that's real important. And he's been an EMT for over five years, so welcome. All right, Emily Riley. How are you today?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you. Emily has been an EMT for just over a year. She is, one of her skills is that you're calm under pressure, which is very important, and a quick decision-maker, so we're lucky to have you. Thank you. All right, Joanna Westle. Joanna Westle, you've been a paramedic for, so I know them as people, I just don't know their, I have not memorized. EMTB for nine years. Nine years from, in both the city and rural settings. She comes from Capron Rescue, I apologize, my mouth is dry and my water's all the way over there. So, but we're lucky to have you and welcome. Thank you. All right, Angel Cardona. So Angel and I went to paramedic school together.
Yes, sir.
So we've, we've worked together on shifts. He is very, very good at what he does. He's very, very good with people, and we are definitely lucky to have you, and we're lucky to have all you guys. So welcome to the city of Belvidere, and thank you very much. Thank you, man.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you all for coming to Belvidere and welcome. And the chief had mentioned it, you know, there really isn't anything more important than whenever you, your loved ones, your friends, neighbors, whenever they need emergency care. And believe me, there isn't anything more important than when you make that phone call and when you come, and when you come to the house and you help. So, city of Belvidere, this is a big step for us, and on behalf of the city of Belvidere, I want to thank you and congratulate you and welcome you. So thank you very much. Oh, I forgot my proclamation on my desk. It's on my desk. Oh, forget it, thank you. Okay. Chief Shadle?
Yes, sir.
I do, I do want to thank you again because, and I have thanked you before, but it really, we didn't have a lot of time to prepare after we were notified that Lifeline was going to discontinue their service, and we did not have a lot of time to circle the wagons, so to speak. And I will tell you that you did a remarkable job, and you had other things that, some other simple things, small things that you were dealing with as well. And it is very important that we provide care, emergency care, paramedic care, EMT care, to our citizens, and that, and we always have. Certainly with Lifeline not being a part of that program anymore, it was, it was huge that we have the right individuals here so that we can continue a tradition of serving the citizens of Belvidere. And I want to thank you personally for making that happen. You put a lot of work in it, your staff put a lot of work in it, as I had said before, the city attorney, our finance director, Hanson, and I want to thank the city council as well, because we haven't done this in a long time. I think it's been well over 20 years, and hopefully, we don't have to do it again. But we did have to circle the wagons, and it is expensive, it's a very expensive proposition, but we're going to make it work, and we will be able to afford to do it. So again, thank you, Chief, appreciate it.
My pleasure, Your Honor.
All right. Moving on, item four, approval of the minutes. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council of April 17th, 2023, as presented. Can I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderwoman Prather, second by Alderwoman Mohal. Okay, thank you. If there's any, no corrections or any discussion, any comments regarding that? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed? Okay, thank you. Public hearing, we have none. And item six, special messages and proclamations. I want to, want to thank Alderman Clayton Stevens for his last 12 years of service on the, not many more years than that, actually, as a fireman for what, 27, Clayton, or 20, 28?
Been with the city 37 years. October of 85, I started with the fire department.
Okay. So beyond the 12 years as, as alderman of Ward 1, the last 12 years, I want to thank Clayton, and I want to recognize him. As I know, as the other aldermen all know here, that you receive calls from individuals in your ward or throughout the city, and they want you, they may want you to do something, you may be able to do it, and you may not. But it does take time, and it does take a commitment, 12 years is a long time, to do that, because I served 12 years, but I staggered it, so I didn't do it 12 in a row, I'll guarantee you that, so that's tough. And anyhow, Clayton is always, you know, he's been at a lot, most all of the, the morning meetings, on Monday morning, prior to the council meetings, or committee meetings in the evening, Clayton has come in, and he always has a laundry list of things, people that may have called him, or items that he thinks needs attention, and certainly, nobody can catch them all, but he gets a majority of them, at least in that ward, and sometimes throughout the city. So been a lot of help, I appreciate it. And I do have a plaque that I wanted to give to you for your 12 years of service, and Clayton, how's your knee? Can you get up? I can.
No, no, I'm, after Friday's surgery, I'm doing fantastic.
All right.
I'm doing dang good.
All right. Well, so I'll just, I'll just read this, Clayton Stevens, First Ward Alderman. In appreciation for 12 years of dedicated service to the city of Belvidere, May 1st, 2011 through April 30th of 2023. So Alderman Stevens, I want you to have this.
Thank you, thank you.
And thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. And microphone is yours?
I've enjoyed serving the citizens of Belvidere since the, like I said, since October of 85 till now, with the fire department for over 24 years. I was actually the city's first licensed paramedic, so listening to all these young kids thinking, gee whiz, I was with the, I was in EMS and fire for over 30 years, I'm thinking, good lord, am I an old fart? I've been in Belvidere 50 years now, so I'm still going to be around doing something. I appreciate the heck out of this, so.
You bet.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you again, Clayton, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. So next is swearing in the new.
That's correct.
Then I will go sit back down here.
You can have a seat here, Clayton, for right now, have a seat, have a seat. All right, and then we have, as item B, the swearing-in of elected officials, and I will be more than happy to turn this over to our clerk. Sarah, turn up seat, Sarah.
Hope we can have Rick, Mike, Wendy, Daniel, Snow, and John Albertini come on up. You guys want to come over here? Yeah, come in the center here. Do y'all together. Okay, if you guys want to raise your right hand and repeat after me, aye. State your name. Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office
The duties of the office.
Of aldermen
Of aldermen.
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
John? John? John, Mr. Albertini? If you'll have a seat here. All right. Okay. Well, thank you and congratulations to all of you. And also, before I forget, I've been reminded, I have it, I have it in my notes here, but thank, thank you for the clerk, city clerk. Those that have been sworn in tonight, please stay after the meeting to be able to sign some paperwork, and also for some pictures. So if you would do that, that would be great. And again, thank you and congratulations. Item C, National Day of Prayer proclamation. I do, I did ask former mayor Fred Burrington to come here this evening. Fred is instrumental with Gideon's, and also Fred certainly has been instrumental with the National Day of Prayer long before, you know, I took office here. Fred has been a wonderful advocate for God in, not only in our community, but also in government. And I know we hear about all the separation issues and what have you, but I think, correct me if I'm wrong, it's always been in God we trust, and I appreciate Fred coming here this evening. So I have a proclamation that I would ask if he would join me up front. Mayor Burrington, if you'd join me up here? All right, the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas throughout history, Americans have lifted up fervent prayers to God on behalf of our nation. From the first beginnings of our founding fathers, elected officials have prayed and entreated those they serve and represent to join them in prayer. Including the authors of our Declaration of Independence, wrote, they say, "The representatives of the United States in general, in general Congress assembled, appealing to the supreme judge of the world, and carried on to present day in presidential proclamations such as last year's invitation to join him in asking for God's continued guidance, mercy, and protection." And whereas, a national day of prayer has not only been a part of our heritage since it was declared by the First Continental Congress in 1775, but it is a public law established in the United States Congress in 1952, approved by a joint resolution and amended by Congress and President Reagan with public law 100-307 in 1988. This affirm that is essential for us as a nation to pray and directing the President of the United States to set aside to set aside and proclaim the first Thursday of May annually as a national day of prayer. And whereas, in our state and across America, the observance of the National Day of Prayer will be held on Thursday, May 4, 2023, with the theme, "Pray fervently in righteousness and avail much", based on the verses in James 5:16. The effective fervent prayer of a righteous man avails much. And whereas, every first Thursday of May, on the National Day of Prayer, we not only express, express our faith and exercise our freedom in prayer, but unite our hearts and voices in personal prayer and public gatherings throughout the city and across our America with fervent praise, repentance, love, and humble intercession for our neighbor and nation, holding fast to the promises throughout the Holy Scripture that the Lord hears and avails much as he answers the faith-filled prayers of his people. Now therefore, I Clinton Morris, Mayor of the city of Belvidere, do hereby proclaim, May 4, 2023, as National Day of Prayer throughout, as throughout the city of Belvidere, and I commend this observant, observance to all of our citizens. In witness thereof, whereof, hereon too, I set my hand and affix a seal of Belvidere, of the city of Belvidere on this first day of May, 2023. And I want to give this to Mr. Burrington. And I want to thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming this evening.
My pleasure.
And I would like you to say a few words. I know you have a few important things to say, so thank you again for coming.
Thank you. Thank you much. Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk, Counselor, elected officials and department heads. On behalf of the Belvidere National Day of Prayer Task Force, I want to thank the city for its continued support in recognizing the National Day of Prayer in Belvidere, Illinois. The elected officials in this room are elected to respond to the will of the people. It is our prayer for each of you that that will will be aligned with God's will, thereby serving our community to the best of your ability. You are all invited to join us for a couple of events this Thursday. The first being at 7:30 a.m. at the Community Building for breakfast and an opportunity for prayer and a message. The second opportunity is a circle of prayer at noon in Big Thunder Park. If your schedules will permit, we would be honored to have you join us in either or both of those events. And finally, if you're not able to, or if you are able to, and you want to hear the message delivered by the National Day of Prayer Task Force, it will be telecast on Facebook and a number of different channels. And I think if you have the opportunity to tune in on that, I think it's at 7 o'clock Thursday night, your hearts will be softened, and you will be able to continue your service for the people of Belvidere. I thank you for allowing me this opportunity to recognize your service and God's will for our people. Amen.
And in your packet, I believe in your packet, you had a, a new prayer list and every day of the month. With National, National Day of Prayer, that continues through every day of the month. The Aldermen, all the department heads, administration, and there are others on this list. But every day, a prayer is said on behalf of the individuals on this list. And thank you again, Mr. Burrington. And moving on to item D. We have committee appointments. Those appointments are in your packets. I can read, I will read this memo that was in the packet from myself. On Monday, May 1, we recognize outgoing Alderman Clayton Stevens and seat the recently elected council members. With each election is the opportunity for growth through committee responsibilities and through our work with one another. In order to foster growth, a modified seating arrangement has been implemented, and the following committee assignments will be introduced as part of special messages. Alderwoman Natalie Mohal, Chairman of the Building Committee. Alderwoman Cheryl Prather, Vice Chairman, Building Committee. Alderwoman Wendy Frank, Chairman of the Finance and Personnel Committee. Alderman Rick Burrington, Vice Chairman, Finance and Personnel Committee. Alderman Mike McGee, Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Committee. Alderman Tom Porter, Vice Chairman, Planning and Zoning Committee. Alderman Matthew Flurry, co-chair, excuse me, Chairman of the Public Safety Committee. Alderman John Albertini, Vice Chairman of the Public Safety Committee. Alderman Dan Snow, Chairman of the Public Works Committee. And Alderwoman Marcia Freeman, Vice Chairman of the Public Works Committee. And I want to thank you, congratulate the individuals that start on, on another term, and then I want to congratulate and thank those that have a little bit to go in their term. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I need, with that being said, I need a motion to approve those committee appointments as stated. And a second motion by Alderwoman Prather, second by Alderman Flurry. Thank you. Any other discussion regarding that? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, same side? Okay. Motion passed. Thank you very much. All right. We have approval, we don't have any approval of expenditures this evening under item eight, committee reports and minutes of city officers. We have approval of the minutes of the committee of the whole Public Safety, Finance, and Personnel Committee of April 24, 2023, as presented. Can I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Flurry. See any corrections, any errors, any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. If there's any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. Unfinished business, item nine, we have none. Item 10, new business under item A. We have ordinance 626-H for first reading. That is an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain personal property, police department vehicles. That will be back. We have item B, Resolution Number 2023-15, and that is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Belvidere and House Sale Levine Associates, LLC, for consult, consulting services relating to our comprehensive plan. Could I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderwoman Prather, and a second by Alderwoman Frank. Thank you. If there's any questions, any comments, any concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor, will when their name is called, answer, will when their name is called, say aye. Any opposed? Nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Albertini? Burrington?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman? McGee?
Aye.
Mohal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed. Thank you. And we will move to motions forwarded from the committee of the whole Public Safety, Finance, and Personnel of April 24, 2023. Motions out of public safety. Chairman Flurry?
Thank you. A, motion to authorize Detective Casey Brox to carry over 19 hours, Sergeant David Byrd to carry over 37.25 hours, and Officer Jonathan Hernandez to carry over 24 hours of unused vacation holiday time from fiscal year '23 to fiscal year '24.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. Are there any questions, any comments regarding that motion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, will when their name is called, answer yes. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Burrington?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman? McGee?
Aye.
Mohal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed. Thank you. Item B, Chairman Flurry?
B, motion to authorize firefighter Corey Mitchell to carry over 72 hours, and firefighter Nick Thornton to carry over 48 hours of unused vacation holiday time from fiscal year '23 to fiscal year '24.
Right, we have that motion out, out of committee. Is there any questions or comments regarding the motion on the floor? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mohal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Burrington?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed. Thank you. Item C?
C, motion to authorize hiring one full-time, non-sworn fire department inspector.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. We have any questions, comments, concerns regarding that motion? Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you. So Chief?
I'm sorry, Alderwoman Frank. Did you have your hand?
Oh, oh, I thought, said Freeman.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I mumble? I may have. Alderwoman, I was looking at Alderwoman Frank. I thought I said it. Alderwoman Frank first. How's that? Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I was sick last week. I had diverticulitis, so I missed out on this last week. But how long have we been out without a fire department inspector?
To my knowledge, I don't believe we've ever had a full-time fire department inspector. So, right now, we just have four fire department inspectors who are also firefighters or officers and filling that role during their 24-hour shift. They've been trying to do the inspections on overtime, off-duty. They've basically, just a super quick summary, they've basically only been able to do the plan reviews for the brand-new projects. And so we haven't been able to follow up on any past dues or any deficiencies, or go out and do the occupancy load checks or anything like that. So we, with this, will be able to do those things.
Okay, I have another question?
Continue.
Okay. I'd also like to know, is there any outside entities that do this kind of fire inspection?
There's, similar to any type of employment. I mean, you, some departments would hire a contract employee. You know, you could call a staffing agency and say, hey, I need a full-time fire inspector assigned to our department. It's pretty cost-neutral to what we're offering, having them just be a non-sworn member of the fire department.
I haven't, okay, continue on. Okay, so what I was thinking, but maybe this is not possible, if the places that need to be inspected, if that would be their responsibility, and they would have to report to us with verification that they've paid and had it done, that would save us money.
Slightly, that's how it works with the online system. The online system is that they have to pay a fee to submit their annual sprinkler checks or system checks. And so, the only unfortunate part about that is that there, right now, the number of past dues is increasing and increasing. And I think the last check was over 270-plus of the 628 structures that were past due. And that number keeps climbing because it's, it's not real high. I mean, business owners, to be honest, they are trying to do everything they can to run their business and stay afloat and take care of customer needs. So unless there's someone out there to kind of motivate them to get this stuff done, it would be, and I honestly don't know of any other communities that would have a model like that. So, when we looked at what we should do, we kind of looked around the area and saw what, how other people are solving this, this problem. We came up with this one as kind of the best solution.
Continue. Floor is yours.
I'm going to let Marcia, or Alderman Freeman speak. And if she hasn't gotten the questions that I have answered, I'll ask some more.
All right. We'll come back to you if, if necessary. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. I just have one question. So this is a full-time salaried position. It's not hourly, correct?
Correct. It would be a salary, salaried position.
So my question is, once, I know we're, we're behind on these because we haven't had an inspector, and our fire department doesn't have really the staff to keep up with them. But once, once we're caught up with these, is there going to be enough work to keep this person busy 40 hours?
They will be extremely busy. My, my hope is overtime, like I explained it kind of last week, they are chopping down a big tree. Unfortunately, that tree just grows because every single year that this, this happens on, on an annual basis. And they would have to complete two inspections a day just to get through one year if they worked 365 days out of the year. And then the other thing is, a lot of times, the follow-ups for, for one occupancy requires multiple, multiple follow-ups. And then there's also help with all our, our pre-planning. So I would anticipate, you know, this individual for, forever would be still prioritizing not getting everything done that he'd want to do and have to prioritize what's the most important thing to do today. I, I don't believe we would ever have slack in that, in that area.
Thank you. That's all I had, Wendy.
Alderwoman Frank?
Okay. I apologize if I missed this because of last week. How much are we offering the salary to be?
So we budgeted roughly 56. The numbers in the draft job description from, from last time, it was, it was just over 56,000.
And that includes the benefits as well, insurance and uniform and all that?
No, ma'am. That's, that's the salary.
Just the salary?
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? I guess, you know, I would have a question, I think, perhaps. You know, I have made comments about our budget and about how prudent that we need to be within our budget. The Chief and I have talked about that. I also understand that we have 289 deficiencies regarding inspections that are, that are past due. And I think you said 270. I think the actual number was 289. But as we move forward with this position, I guess my concern would be regarding overtime. And I know in the past, I've talked about overtime with other jobs or other positions that the city has decided maybe not to hire that individual, but we have participated, for instance, with the Health Department. And one of my concerns with Chief Woody at that time was regarding overtime, and that we didn't want that to run away with what we determined would be a fixed amount. With this position, how's your standing on that, Chief?
I mean, they would, would kind of be like our, our secretary, Ms. Gilman, that she, she works those hours and prioritizes what's the most important things to do. I wanted to anticipate there being an overtime expenditure for that line item. Number one, because I didn't budget for it. So I, all, every single dollar in that overtime budget was allocated for a certain purpose, and there was nothing budgeted for the inspector. And 40 hours a week would put us in a way better position than, than we're in today. And so I wanted to anticipate, and I, I won't have them do overtime unless there was, say, a major project going on a major project going on that they needed to get this done, otherwise we're holding back a contract or a small amount, and then if in that situation we had to do that, I'd have to take that from somewhere else. So I understand that completely, but I, because I never want to say never or always, but it would be extremely unlikely for there to be overtime for them.
Thank you. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So because this is a salaried, non-union position, do salary employees even get overtime? Don't they get the same salary, no matter how many hours they work or don't work?
I can answer that question. It's an FLSA non-exempt position, meaning it is subject to overtime, as opposed to FLSA exempt, your department heads, managerial staff, and things like that. So it's a non-exempt position. When he refers to salary, he's talking about, that's the salary for the year, assuming they work their traditional assigned work hours. But just as many of our staff that we call salaries, you approve a salary every year, they really are FLSA non-exempt, and if they were to work overtime, they'd be entitled to that overtime.
Okay, any other questions? All right, hearing none. We then have a motion to authorize the city to hire one full-time, non-sworn fire department There's no other discussion? All those in favor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Burrington?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed. Thank you. Chairman Flurry, item D?
D, motion to authorize filling the upcoming firefighter vacancy on or after May 15th,
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. If there's any questions, comments on that? Chief, did you have any comments on that at all? Chief Shadle?
Nothing in particular to add unless Alderwoman Frank has a question about it not being there.
Was I not looking? Alderwoman Frank, yes.
I just wanted to know, do we know who it is?
So right now, we have one individual that's made it all the way through all the steps in the Police and Fire Commission, the background check, and the last step after the oral interview is a conditional offer of employment pending psychological tests and medical tests. He's completed all the tests. I've gotten the report back for the psychological as recommend for hire, and the very last thing that we're waiting on is the medical test. His name is Jason Jankowski. He has been working 24/48s as an EMT paramedic firefighter. He will, assuming he passes the medical exam, he'll be a great addition to the department. He'll be able to come in with just a basic orientation and then start providing service right away.
And you'll let us know when they're sworn in, or will it be here?
Yep, absolutely. The meeting is Thursday for the Police and Fire Commission to actually authorize, to actually hire the individual. He did his medical test on last Tuesday, and they said that they should have the information to me real quick and definitely by Thursday. So if the Police and Fire Commission states that they want to hire him, then we'll pick the swearing-in date, and I will definitely let everybody know and invite everyone there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, the motion on the floor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Burrington?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed. Thank you. Continue, Chairman Flurry?
E, motion to approve the Special Olympic Athletes Parade permit request from the Belvidere Township Park District for May 22nd, 2023.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. Is there any questions regarding that motion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Burrington?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed. Thank you. Chairman Flurry?
F, motion to approve the block party request to close Cloverdale Way from Huntington Drive to Fairfield Trail on May 28th, 2023, from 2:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. Is there any questions, any concerns regarding that motion? It's on the floor. Hearing none. All those in favor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Burrington?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed. Thank you. And item G?
G, motion to approve the block party request to close East Fourth Street from Calwell Street to Fremont Street on June 10th, from 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. Any questions, any concerns regarding that motion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Burrington?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed. Thank you, Chairman Flurry, and we'll move to motions of public works. Chairman Snow?
Thank you, Your Honor. H, motion to enter into an agreement with Lakeland Biologists for the 2023 Farmington Pond Maintenance Program at an estimated cost of $16,000. This work to be paid from the Farmington Ponds Special Service Area.
All right, thank you. We have that motion out of committee. Is there any questions or concerns regarding that motion on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Burrington?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed. Thank you. Chairman Snow?
Motion, aye. Motion to approve the low bid from Bell Rock Asphalt Painting in the amount of $9,672.02 for the paving of the new basketball court at General Mills Park. This work would be paid from the $25,000 grant from General Mills.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. Any questions, any concerns regarding that motion on the floor? Right, that was the low bid as well. All right, hearing none. All those in favor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Burrington?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.